We have our first briefing item, Architectural and Engineering Services for Mitchell Elementary and Pathways, Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees and members of the community who are still with us. We are pleased to bring forward this evening such a great day in the Ann Arbor Public Schools as we bring forward this initial set of large projects on our 2019 bond. I want to share my gratitude to Chair Lazarus and the Bond Committee, who have met with these members of these teams in front of us on previous occasions. So what is coming to you this evening is a streamlined version of a presentation. And trustees who have not had the opportunity to meet this team yet, I want to remind you that we'll be happy to set up a time if you'd like to just visit with them further. But we're bringing forward a really architectural design according to the Phase One 2019 Bond Capital Plan. And the two schools are for Mitchell Elementary. As you all are familiar, Mitchell Elementary, a Title I school that over the previous five years has doubled in size due to the popularity and really the attraction of the International Baccalaureate Program and all of the amazing work that goes on there under the leadership of Matt Hilton, Principal Matt Hilton, and Allison Epler. And that team is extraordinary. So we're delighted to be able to give Mitchell Elementary this space that they need. Trustees, you recall that we have built a wing and we've added two modular installments there, and we still have Mitchell filled to overflowing. So this will be a great day to replace the Mitchell building right on the current property and then to use the current existing Mitchell School as the location where all of those South schools will use when their large projects are being completed. So this endeavor, both the construction of the new building and then the use of the prior building, Mr. Latsana will correct me, but it's a decade of work, if not more. Secondly, Pathways to Success Campus. We realigned our small high school several years ago and moved the location of Pathways so that it would be right on an easy bus route in the center part of town to serve more students. Pathways has realigned its programming, is serving many more students. And it has always been our intention to bring this historic elementary school in line with the small high school learning community, specialized learning that goes on there at Pathways campus. So that vision will be developed with input from the community, but it really is about opening up that Pathways campus to serve the needs of older students, high school students who are embarking in internships and doing lots of exciting work as they get ready to graduate. So with that, you kind of have an overview of the vision behind these two projects at each of these two schools. Ms. Jill Minnick and Mr. Emile Latsana have navigated this process to bring to you this evening a team of professionals that will walk us through this process. I'll ask Mr. Latsana to do the introduction so that we know who everyone is. And trustees, I know you're already, many of you are already familiar with some of the folks on this Zoom screen. So with that, Ms. Minnick and Mr. Latsana, walk us through. We're really excited to hear more about Mitchell Elementary School New Version and Pathways to Success Campus, really elevating that campus as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Good evening, President Johnson, Board of Trustees, and those members of our Ann Arbor community that are hanging with us tonight. It's been a great evening, excellent summer offerings. So we're so glad to see that, and of course, the health update and the superintendent's update. I'll just add a little context of my own here. This is really exciting. And this is, we're talking about Bryant, the last time this district built an elementary school was in 1973 when we opened Bryant Elementary. When this building, the new Mitchell, opens in 2023 for our students, it will have been 50 years since this community built a new elementary school in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Likewise, you know, the Pathways to Success program has been a success, and it's a growing program. And this opportunity to invest in that new offering that the school district has and to really enhance that for 21st century learning, you know, and you'll hear from our group how they've worked with districts to move the needle for people, you know, whatever their career path might be, whether it's a community college, building trades, traditional college, or straight into work. You know, we're really excited about that. So I'll introduce the team in a second, but I just want to give a sense of the process here. This has been a really rigorous process on our end selecting this team that we're presenting to you today. And I want to acknowledge Stephanie Corona. Hey, Stephanie, from Gilbane Building Company, who you may remember. They've been really supporting us as the Bond Program Management Group, helping us with this process, making sure that lots of people saw the opportunity. And we did have, for the Mitchell program, we had seven proposals for services. And for the Pathways program, we had nine proposals. And I'm pleased to report that through the interview process, which included not only the principal and the assistant principal of each building, but also the AAEA representative to the building, other teachers, office professionals, as well as members of the superintendent's cabinet. In both cases, this group that we're going to see a presentation from tonight, and you'll have an opportunity to ask them questions, were the unanimous selection of our committees. There was not another group that people felt was more qualified. And so we're really excited to introduce this group. So I'll overview the organizations quickly and then introduce the people that you see here. And then Mr. Seaman will load his presentation and will, they'll walk through it and then be available for some slides. So serving as architect of record, the proposal is for Newman Smith Architecture. They are Michigan-based, award-winning design firm that has created unique design solutions for over 50 years for their clients here in Michigan, across the country, and around the world. They are experts in architecture, design, project management, and they have developed a reputation for leading large-scale, complex projects through a heavily collaborative and integrated design approach that includes 3D building, information modeling, and working with virtual reality tools. They take great pride in completing sustainable projects that support innovation, equity, and social wellness for the entire community. They are partnered with Fielding International, are exclusively a design, educational design firm with two decades of experience and have worked in over 50 countries. And many of those projects have been with the International Baccalaureate Program, which we have at the Mitchell School. They are comprised of both architects and educators who are deeply committed to reimagining the future of education alongside the communities they serve. They are headquarters in Minneapolis, but they also have local offices here in Ferndale, Michigan. IMAG Corp. has a local office in Novi, Michigan, and is one of the largest engineering and design consulting firms in the United States, specializing in high-performance building systems, infrastructure, program management, and construction-related services. They are employee-owned, results-driven, with a passion for transforming environments and communities through high-performance design and infrastructure. And so we've, we have some additional consultants, including Tellier 10 is a sustainability and educational consultant, Beckett and Raider for civil engineering and landscape architecture with local offices here in Ann Arbor, and EF Whitney on food service design. So we have, we have eight members of this team here this evening. Gene Carroll, who is the principal in charge from Newman Smith, James Seaman, a design principal from Fielding International, Ellen Duff, a senior designer from Fielding International, Justin Dipple, another senior designer from Fielding International, Michael Posthumus, he's a senior learning designer and community engagement leader, Jeff Winslow from Newman Smith will be a project manager, Don Peterson, specifications and quality control, and Jeff Oak from IMAG Corporation will be the project manager on the engineering side of the project. And so with that, I'm going to, I think Gene maybe is going to, Mr. Carroll or Mr. Seaman will walk you through some slides and we'll have some opportunity for your questions and to review the board, the memorandums that we have prepared. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Emile. I appreciate the introduction. And I'd like to begin by saying good evening to everyone and expressing our appreciation for the opportunity to be considered for this really important work with the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Dr. Swift, President Johnson, Board of Trustees, and the entire Ann Arbor community have, have really worked to establish some very ambitious goals that are very inspiring to us as designers. And so we're thrilled to have the opportunity to be a part of this. And I want to assure you that the team that we've assembled for this, for these projects is a very high caliber, a lot of experience, and I'm delighted to kind of kick us off and share some of the unique qualities of our team. So if I could begin, I'd like to just focus first on our initiative with regards to learning, education. All of the firms that Emile has spoken about have deep roots in education. Many of us have worked together for several years, establishing a history of predictable outcomes and successful projects. And so we're really glad to be teamed and paired together, be able to offer you the depth of service that we have as a team. And I'm really most excited about being able to pair with our, our local design partner in Fielding International. They're just down the road, about 10 minutes from us. And we're really excited to be able to merge our collective experience in K-12 education. As you mentioned, Emile, Fielding International is a 100% K-12-focused firm. For almost 20 years now, that's been their practice. And with educators and specialists on their team, they bring a wealth of experience that we're, we're excited to have as part of our team. In addition to that, I'd like to talk a little bit about engagement. If you go to the next slide, James, we all know and understand how important it is for architecture to support engagement and build communities. We, as a team, are fully engaged, we work very integrated. With all of our firms being just minutes from each other, we spend a lot of time in what we call a big room collection of experts and working relationships to sort out, sift out some of the best practices and design. And we, we understand that the engagement with the Ann Arbor community and your team's leadership is so important. And when we have the opportunity to do so, I want to make mention that, that all of us are so close. We're within 45 minutes of your campus, and we hope to be able to spend quite a bit of time, when the time is right, in sessions together so that we can hear everyone's voice and we can really learn and find the best solutions through a working relationship together. And so our culture for engagement is high, and we'll share with you a little bit in our design process how we really make that work together as a team. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about our approach. If, if you go to the next slide, James, it begins with a hands-on type of arrangement between our teams working closely together. As I mentioned, we're, we're very integrated. Jeff will speak to our process later on in our presentation, but it's a very collaborative type of approach. We work in a BIM or Building Information Modeling platform, allows us to all work together and design systems interactively so that we can each see what, what we're doing and we're able to share that work with you. And through virtual and augmented reality, we're able to share that design early on in the process so that we can share and impart design strategies with everyone who's interested as we go through the design process. And finally, I'd like to share that our firms are deeply committed to sustainability, both personally and professionally. In our firm, we encourage all of our professionals to become LEED accredited or credentialed in either fit well or well organizations so that we can bring the best design attributes to our work. IMAG is a international engineering firm that supports this initiative. They have a team of focused engineers who research design strategies to support these initiatives. And with Tellier 10 as a global environmental design leader, working all around the world, we really believe that we have a very strong team that's going to meet your objectives with regards to sustainability. So I'm really excited to have our team assembled and ready to go. We're excited and inspired by your initiatives, and we can't wait with your endorsement to get to work. I'd like to let James and Justin speak to you a little bit about our design approach.
Thank you, Gene. I will jump in here, talking about how we approach designing schools. And as Mr. Latsana and Gene mentioned, we only design schools, that's all we do. We're very passionate about it. And what really makes our, our team unique is that we, we have educators and architects in our team. So we really, we really want to understand what is the educational vision. And so our approach is really around alignment. That's really a key piece to making this work. It's not just about designing a building or a school that supports your needs. It's really about aligning with your educational vision, aligning that also with the human capacity, what teachers can, can do, the teaching and learning activities that they are doing with, with students, and how can the environment support those things? And so it's really this holistic approach that we, that we see. And Mike Posthumus, who is our educator, he will be talking a little bit more about the engagement side of things, how we really dig into this and how we really get into unpacking and understanding these items. Another aspect of our work is we are very much in tune with research. The diagram on the left is actually research I did for my PhD dissertation at Michigan State University. And what I was looking at is really this relationship between how, how the physical environment can really serve as an educational technology and support or constrain teaching and learning activities. And that's a really important relationship is to understand what you're trying to do that aligns with your educational goals. And really, the space is what supports those things to either, from happening or not happening. And I'll show you a diagram here in just a minute to kind of explain it. Another body of research that we are really influenced by is the work of Dr. Carrie Leanna. And the work that she did was really around social capital and teacher collaboration. And a lot of times in traditional schools, teachers are just simply isolated from one another. The design of a school is really kind of what you see in this diagram here is you have individual classrooms that are aligned along the corridor, and it really isolates teachers from one another. And through her work, Dr. Carrie Leanna's work, that when schools really embrace the social capital and really embrace teacher collaboration, that the end results to students increases. And so a way that we, we can look at this too is down at the bottom right, you see a matrix here that shows going from solo teaching to teacher collaboration, going from a teacher-directed mode of learning to more student-centered, going from segregated subjects to integrated subjects, and then classroom-based to network-based. And when you have a design like this, a traditional model, it makes it very hard for you to do those things on the right-hand side of this spectrum. And so approach that we, or how we approach designing schools is really thinking about them as a learning community. And I actually had skipped over a slide, but this is an example of what a learning community could, could look like. And a diagram for how that could work is, is in this image here. And so really what it's about is creating a variety of flexible spaces. And really, having this variety allows you to match the, the learning activity with the type of space that, that is conducive to them. So what you'll see is having this variety where you have, you still have classrooms. We like to kind of rename them a little bit here and call them learning studios or learning suites, which is really a pair of classrooms that are connected together. But also you have spaces such as common areas and small group rooms and active labs. And at the heart of it is really a space that allows for that teacher collaboration to take place, which is simply a teacher collaboration room. And when you have this variety of spaces, it really does allow more of these activities on the, on the right-hand side of the spectrum to take place. But it doesn't mean that solo teaching can't happen. It still can. You still have spaces for those types of activities. Learning can still be teacher-directed, and it is important to have, in some cases, lessons or things that are taught to students that are very much teacher-directed. So it really allows this range of activities to take place. And so we really think about space in that way of how can we create more of a range, a variety of spaces that has flexibility. And with that, I'm going to turn it to Justin to talk about some of the types of spaces we design.
Thanks, James. I want to briefly talk about patterns and strategies to create engaging 21st century learning environments. The first pertains to inquiry-based learning cycles. And really, this is a methodology centered around IB curriculum. It's, it's a way of organizing learners and interdisciplinary themes, networking and cohort scheduling. It really supports the, the highest level of community and self-directed learning. And it's really about that inquiry-based and experiential learning. So it, we think about it in a couple of ways. The first is, is the space, space that supports various learning modalities and the technology. Now, some of the ways we think about the technology are the furniture, the actual equipment and amenities, the connections between spaces. And it's really about those learning environments allow students to design, iterate, and demonstrate their learning. It's that process where they can, you know, return back to that cycle and reflect. The next is really centered around design patterns. So over the years, we've developed a series of iterative design patterns. And really, these are methods for organizing space and learners. So in this example is a learning design pattern centered around this lounge concept in a, in a middle school setting. And this is really about creating spaces and a variety of spaces for student ownership of wellness so they really have accountability and access to counselors, to professionals, engagement with other students. And it's really about creating environments that support social and emotional needs and engagement. And, you know, this is just one of many patterns that we will, you know, identify and, and work through in designing learning environments. Then lastly, I'll touch upon our COVID response. One of, one of the things we've learned over the past 18 months to two years is, is really about resiliency of learning environments in responding to COVID-19. So we've, we've done extensive studies in investigative research, collaborative series, podcasts, outreach, understanding students and educators where they are, where they need to be, and coming up with methodologies, you know, of how we can respond to this in the actual space and technology and learning design, and how we can create environments that will be versatile, not only for, for the short term, but the long-term commitment to our students, teachers, and community. And so with that, you know, there are various strategies, you know, probably a lot more than we need to go in for this meeting, but it's really about creating variety, variety of spaces, spaces that are easily adaptable. And those might take the form of suites, workshops, studios, common spaces, you know, spaces of various scales, various breakout opportunities. And also furniture is a really pivotal part to that. So with that, I want to pass it to Mike Posthumus. He's going to touch on engagement and equity.
Good evening, anyone or everyone. So glad to be here tonight and talk to you. One of my roles is to work with community and to work with the district and, and ensure that the schools that we, that, that we will be working on are designed with the voice and vision and intent and aspirations of the community that you serve. And then when these buildings are actually built, that that community has ownership in the process. One of the ways that we do that is utilizing research. Like just as James and Justin mentioned, we, we ground our work in what professionals have discovered and have informed us in best practice. So one of those, one of those pieces is this document on the screen, Designing a Process for Inclusive Innovation: A Radical Commitment to Equity. This was a document that is a body of research that was produced through funding from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. They're major proponents for inclusivity and equity in education. And, and on the next slide, what I'll talk about are just some, some basic elements of this that we apply to our community engagement process to ensure that we do capture every voice. It can be challenging to work with schools around the world like we do, and you were always coming in as outsiders to school communities. Schools are tight. You all know each other really well, whether it's at a building level or at a district level. We don't have that abundance. And so this type of strategy is really helpful in building trust and building relationships so that we can understand and truly empathize with your students and with your parents and with your teachers before and as we design a building. And so these are just three of the steps that we use that I have on the screen on the right in yellow, orange, and red, just as an example of some of the tactics that we employ as part of our community engagement tools. First, we connect, connect and commit. We want your community to know that we truly care about the problems you're trying to solve and the aspirations that you have for your young people. We do that through, through identifying priorities and needs that you've identified and making sure we understand those clearly. We ask a lot of questions, like why is that an issue? And, and why, why do you think that's happening? We do a lot of narrative and storytelling exercises where we try and listen to the constituents and students and just hear their stories. Because that's way, those are ways that we can gain insight into making a design that actually is solving not just symptoms of challenges, but the root causes of issues that are going to improve education. As we move through the kind of connect and commit phase, we, we get into inquiry and investigation. We like to triangulate the things that we hear, and we do this by making sure that we listen to all voices. It's easy to be a loud voice and raise your hand and, and, you know, and say things multiple times from the back of the room and in the front of the room, but there are people that don't express themselves that way. And so we're careful to create experiences that allow somebody who might be more introverted or may not feel confident expressing something about the needs that they have for school or their vision for learning in ways that we can still hear them and see them and recognize them, just like the person at the back of the room waving their hands. And so that's how we kind of inquire and investigate and triangulate the information that we gather. And that's from community members, that's from students, that's from, again, building leaders, from teachers, and from the multiple stakeholders that you have that are a part of every school. And then we move into the design and development phase, which is where we take all this great information that we've collected and we literally roll up our sleeves with your community, and we begin to sketch and design and explore and respond to images. And we do this in a way that we, is we try to be as inclusive and responsive as we can. Just like your educators are creating differentiated instructional experiences for students to meet their needs, we try and do the same thing in our community engagement. We want to differentiate the ways that people can contribute and give feedback so that everyone can own these amazing buildings at the end of the process. On the left, I just have an image. During COVID, we've adapted to this environment by incorporating more digital tools that are easy to manipulate and are accessible from, you know, things like your smartphone or even inexpensive laptops. So we are trying to incorporate both synchronous and asynchronous digital and in-person experiences in all the ways that we can. And we will do that, we will design the final strategies for that alongside your team at the district. And on this, this next page, James, if you want to advance it one more, there's some images here from a school that I had the opportunity to work with in the Middle East that is actually also an international baccalaureate school. They have a PYP program, just like Mitchell Elementary. And when I say all these things about community engagement, what does that actually look like? So this is what it looks like. We literally go into schools and we, we So this is what it looks like. We literally go into schools and we talk to students and we do focus groups. We meet the students where they're at, where they're learning, and we ask them what their joy, you know, how they love school and what do they enjoy? And what would make school better? We do community meetings and town halls and workshops where we invite parents and building leaders and architects and designers and stakeholders to all come together and to share and brainstorm and work through challenges as a team. And then we do a lot of internal engagement. As James mentioned at the beginning, we want to align the vision for learning with the learning environment that we ultimately design. And so the only way to do that is to really understand what your building leaders and your teachers need to do every single day to provide the best experiences for their kids. And so the bottom left, bottom two images are representative of the stakeholder engagement that we do with the internal teams, really digging into the pedagogy and the teaching strategies that your buildings use. And then we map it all out using our tools and use that as a place to vet and challenge and understand exactly what your school wants to achieve. Only then do we start putting together an actual building design. And I think that's what makes our schools so amazing and successful. And the last slide is just reiterating, we are truly committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the ways that we do that is we try and bring the experience of providing insight into the process to help us design a building for your community to your community where they are at. This is just some images from a project that we did in Wenatchee, Washington, which is a rural agricultural community in Washington State. And in this community, the school we were working with, the parents of this community were almost 100% English as a second language or English language learners. We did, and this was during the summer of COVID last year. So we worked with a local community group, the Parque Pedrinos, to explore what would be the most trustful and successful way to work with your community. And what they said is, come to our park, come to the place that all of our community feels comfortable in. And so we did three community engagement sessions outdoors in this park in Spanish and created a product that that community is truly proud of. And the product of that is the Nuestro Espacio, which is the manifesto for their place, for the place that they want to create at their school. So this is just one example, and we will work with your district to create something, you know, the similar version that's going to work best for your community. And with that, I'll give it to Ellen to kind of articulate another example of how this has played out in another part of the world.
Thanks, Mike. One thing that's so great about working with our team is we do work internationally and have so much access to different cultural understandings. One project we're working on right now is in actually Singapore. And we've been working for the past few years through tons of different engagement sessions, whether it's teacher engagement, student engagement, parent town halls. I personally love the student engagement workshops. We talk with students throughout the spectrum of kindergartners through all the way through 12th grade. And we always find that wellness is so important to them. And so this is actually a workshop we worked with them, and they're actually planning a hammock patio and some of the landscape features we've actually incorporated into our current design based off these workshops. So often from these different workshops, it's not only what we've heard, but we can also create design strategies around those. So not only is it what the environment looks like, it's also what does teaching and learning look like? So being able to have creative strategic alignment around the goals of the school. And as architects, we can start designing to embrace those strategies. But it also might be creating places, not facilities. A lot of these schools, as James was mentioning earlier, are more dated and have these siloed learning environments. How do you really create an Ann Arbor experience? One opportunity that we took, if you want to go to the next slide, James, is talking with the community engagement around what makes their school special. So if you took a second to think about Ann Arbor, what does it smell like? What does it look like? What do you hear when you're walking down the street? We really want to embrace the overall dynamic of Ann Arbor when we're thinking about the school. And with Singapore, we had a similar workshop with just that they're right in the Singaporean rainforest, the school is. And so we actually recreated the rainforest as this community space when people arrive on campus. It's a space for kindergartners to have lunch with their second-grade sibling. It's a place where parents can come in and have lunch with their students to really engage the community in a way that's welcoming and invites the whole community to participate within the school setting. With that, I will pass it over to Jeff to talk a little bit about sustainability.
Great, thanks, Ellen. So we know how important sustainability is to Ann Arbor and the Ann Arbor Public School system. And so we're really excited to have the opportunity to be part of that. I mean, this is really kind of the heart of what our business is built around, and we can't wait to get into the details with Emile and his team to, you know, really meet, you know, help you guys meet your goals with, when it comes to sustainability and help to develop a building that really has very minimal impact on the environment. So we know a lot of your goals, you know, high-performance systems and envelope. We really want to review building electrification to help, you know, reduce carbon footprint and carbon impact within the environment. We know that net zero energy is very important to your district, and, you know, we're going to conduct studies for whole building lifecycle analysis and low embodied carbon, you know, whether we're looking at, you know, timber-built structures or, you know, ways to reduce steel within the construction of your project to help reduce embodied carbon. And then we also know that sustainable culture is very important to you. Not only, you know, do we want to build a very sustainable building, but we want to have the students interact with that building and understand how it works and how it is helping to reduce the impact on the environment and help students learn how they can become more sustainable in the way that they operate in their daily lives. So we're really excited about helping you meet those design goals. Our team is also working very closely with the local utilities to understand, James, if you go to the next slide, to understand, you know, what their progress is towards, you know, you know, their carbon footprint and metric tons of carbon that they're producing in order to provide electricity and whatnot, and the local vendors of natural gas systems so that we can understand those as to, you know, what their impacts are today and also what their impacts are in 2030, 2040, and 2050 so that we're making educated decisions for what's the right systems for your buildings based on, you know, the future of how those utilities will be delivered. Here's an example of, if you go to the next slide, James, an example of kind of an analysis that we did of about 10 different mechanical systems for a project and a new development at the University of Michigan, your neighbor down the street, where we evaluated a whole bunch of different options for systems that included geothermal and variable refrigerant flow systems and, you know, very traditional baseline systems. You know, where we looked at all different things from first cost to impact of maintenance, to how much energy these systems use, and what does that energy cost for the district year after year? What is the impact of the carbon footprint of each of these systems? And not only did, as I mentioned before, not only did we look at it for when the building was going to open, but we also looked at it for when it was, what the impact would be in 2030 as well as 2050, you know, 30 years down the road. And so we are excited to take a very similar process with you to find what is the right system that will provide a very comfortable, safe environment for your faculty and students moving forward that meets the goals that we went through at the beginning of this presentation. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Dawn to go through some quality assurance and controls.
So I've been practicing architecture for 28 years or so now. And most of that time I've spent writing specifications and doing material evaluation. So my role on this particular project team is requires researching and staying abreast of improvements in materials and systems. So all of the beautiful images that you've seen of the buildings that our teams have worked on, you know, they have one thing in common, and that is that they're all made of materials that have been combined in various ways to form systems. And part of my job is to help the project teams select and evaluate all these different materials against the project goals that you have set up and established through all of the programming exercises that have been previously described. And whether those goals are simply, you know, to just be code compliant or whether it's to have high durability or reduced maintenance, or even if it's robust warranties that are offered by reputable companies that'll stand behind those warranties, or even various aspects of sustainability, whether it's a commitment to a sustainable program such as Living Future or LEED or WELL, or just simply aspects of those programs such as the reduction of embodied energy or heat island reduction, or even the prohibition of materials and chemicals on particular looks such as Living Future's red look. So part of what I do is take all of that information together and help you find the materials that will meet those goals and help you figure out which materials will meet the goals and where they fall short of those goals so that you can make an informed decision on what materials you want in your building. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Jeff to talk a little bit more about quality assurance.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Winslow, and I am going to be your project manager for these initial initiatives under the current bond. I have 25-plus years' experience practicing architecture in the state of Michigan and California. 10 years of that experience is in the K-12 realm. Additionally, I have four years of experience working alongside Emile in the Detroit Public Schools on some of their initiatives. In that capacity, I served as their interim district architect. My recent project management work, you know, focused on high-quality, large-scale, complex projects where we got involved with, you know, global design firms and extensive engineering teams that works throughout the United States. While we were executing those projects, we, you know, used some very innovative tools, you know, that some folks have already mentioned. You know, we work with HoloBuilder. We work in breakout meetings, huddle meetings. We work in the building information modeling softwares. And we work with BIM 360, which is a collaborative software that allows the team to work in the same model all at the same time so that they can, you know, get real-time diagnostics. And we also implement a very robust internal QA QC process. And with that, you know, my firm prides itself on working on these very large, complex projects. And I'm very excited to start working on the Ann Arbor Public Schools initiatives. Thank you. With that, I'd like to send it back to James.
Thanks, Jeff. So just in closing here, sharing some images of inspiration. The one thing that I hope we conveyed here is that really what we do is custom design. And so we're not really coming in with any preconceived ideas. It's really about working with you, your community, to really understand what that educational vision is and how we can design a school that really supports the teaching and learning activities that you would want to take place. So some things that we think about, when we think about innovative learning and catalysts, these are some things that we find in the work that we've done that really is important to think about or to include. So flexibility is key, especially with 21st century learning, being able to regroup students, being able to allow for a range of activities to take place, having space for collaboration, having space for presentation. I talked a lot about professional space for teachers already. Having spaces for project work, and then also informal and social space is really important as well. And so I just have some images of some projects that we worked on, and I'll just flip through this pretty quickly. I know it's getting late. So these are just some projects we've done, and these kind of demonstrate the different types of spaces that I was just describing. And that's it. I'll turn it to Gene to have kind of the final closing remark.
Thanks, thanks, James. As James mentioned, you know, we do come at each project unique to the design parameters that we learn and listen from you all. We've been, you know, listening tonight and hearing the initiatives and the passion, the leadership that's been conveyed through your team to make sure your students are safe and to support their educational success. And it's inspiring to be at the same, you know, in the same frame to be able to support your initiative. So we'd love to answer any questions that you have. We know this has been a short presentation, but if you have particular questions that you'd like to ask now while we have a few minutes, we'd love to entertain any questions you might have.
I just want to quickly say I feel very fortunate because I got to see the long presentation. And you left out my favorite part, which was the recording studio as a possibility for Pathways. I mean, but I do think that it, you know, to Trustee Carrie Arrow's point, a lot of the pictures that you showed really demonstrate the flexibility that you have, the multi-pronged kind of nature that you use to plan these things out. I'm really excited as well. You know, we do talk about this being an opportunity to really, you know, paint a path for our future. I think that it's also a great opportunity to recognize our past, which I mentioned in our meeting. You know, I think in Ann Arbor, as we talk about, you know, the culture, we definitely have a townie culture. We have a history of indigenous people who occupy this land before we were all here, have a very strong Underground Railroad and abolitionist history and those types of things. There's so many opportunities to really look at all those different aspects of the physical land and to pay tribute to it and use it as a teaching tool. So I'm excited about that. Also love that this slogan, "Creating Spaces, Not Facilities," I was like, oh, man, put that on a T-shirt. And we need to mass produce that. That was really good. I just, again, I'm excited about, you know, this presentation and then the one that I saw before. We definitely need to go through another briefing, but, you know, I look forward to hopefully working with you all. And the last thing I'll say is this community engagement thing, I'm really excited about that as well. I think as we develop these different schools, having different, you know, trustees that are really close to the process is really important. I know Trustee Baskett mentioned some of the experience that she has. She's also has a lot of experience around this specific community where these schools are going to be. So hopefully we can engage her really directly in the early stages as well. But overall, just super excited. This is a great way to end a, or to, something that's great to have at the tail end because I think it gives a little bit of extra energy. And I'll just say that I'm on Asia time. As Mike said, that'll inspire me to get a second wind. But thank you, thank you so much for the presentation. It was beautiful.